We'll start the meeting. Calling the meeting of December 12th, the regular meeting in the City Council to order at 6:30. And we will start with a pledge to the flag. Join me please. A pledge will be addressed to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will ask to the board to do the roll call, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Stransky?
Yes.
Orinstine?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes. So, we will start with public communications, and these are for any items that are not on the regular agenda, that if you want to address the City Council on any other matter within our jurisdiction, you have your moment to talk to us about anything that's on your mind, and do not take action on those because they would have to be agendized to take action on them. But you have up to three minutes to ask us to hear what you have to say, and we can sometimes then decide to put it on a future agenda. So would anyone like to speak to an item, to something that is not on the agenda? If so, now is your opportunity. Come on up here and state your name if you would.
My name is Tom Mann, and I just had a little, something I wanted to share with you guys. First of all, I'd like to thank our private department for putting out our building today. It wasn't a big deal, but I gotta tell you what, there's nothing like having a bunch of guys that are ready to go to work, got the equipment, take care of business, pull the heat meter out, make sure nothing's going on inside the walls, slap you on the back and say, "See you later." It was nice. Thank you, Chris. That's well done. I'd like to say. And for me, I wanted to spend a minute because, I guess I'm kind of partially responsible for Orinstine showing up in town, and I'm kind of glad that he did. His lovely wife, we met at a craft market on the East Coast, and I voted for Ron three times in a row, and I was very, I'm very happy with what he has done with the council. He's taken a very important role in being that guy who's the counter guy. He's the guy that makes people talk about stuff. He's the guy that, he's the guy that like does his homework. He comes up, he has a look, he has a position. Has anybody ever not known what Ron's position was? So, I think that takes a lot of strength and character, and I'm really, I'm really happy about that, and it creates dialogue that's important in a democracy so that things don't go too fast in the wrong direction, or too fast in the right direction. So, it's really good. So, I just wanted to personally recognize Ron's service to our community, and I'd suggest that we give a hand.
You know, Tom, if you make me cry, so help me, I'll kick your ass.
I pay him to go up and do it.
There, there is going to be an item on the agenda where we will all get a chance to say our thanks.
You can say it again?
But yes, but it doesn't hurt to do it right at the beginning. I bet that's really nice. Anybody else want to address the council on items that are not on the agenda? And if not, we will move on to the consent calendar. By the way, we're doing this before we swear in the council members because of, these are items that the current council members are more familiar with. So, we have a minutes of November 14th, and adopting a resolution for an award contract to VSS International for construction of pavement preservation projects around town. There's seven streets that are involved, and I always want to add just a point of information. When your street happens to be one of them that's targeted, that gets, has this restoration paving, it looks like a pretty good street, and you think, oh, there are a lot of other streets that need this more because they have potholes. But the point of these is that if you do the repaving when it's still in good shape, it lasts many years. If you wait until it has potholes, it's a lot more expensive, and so this is a longer-term way to keep more of our streets in good shape. So, that's my editorial comment about that item. So, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll so move.
I'll second it.
Any comments from the public on this consent calendar items? And if not, because there's money involved, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Orinstine?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes. Okay. So, the next item is the adoption, declaring the results of the general municipal election. So, these are the official results from the election, and we have that information in the packet, and would anyone like to move to adopt that resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we've moved in second. Does anyone want to comment about that? If not, we'll have, I think we can just do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay. So, we're now moving to a presentation for our municipal outgoing council member, Ron Orinstine, and I'm gonna have Stephanie take the lead on this.
Thank you. I am actually going to use the podium to sort of start the ball rolling, so to speak.
I have a feeling I should leave.
We're gonna have to go.
This is gonna, this is gonna get ugly, I think.
Photo op.
I would just like to congratulate and thank councilperson Ron Orinstine for his three terms of service to the Willetts City Council. It has been a pleasure working with councilmember Orinstine, Ron, for almost a year now. Councilmember Orinstine has impressed me as someone who has taken his responsibility to the city of Willets very seriously and to heart. He has done so independently, with no hidden agendas or unseemly political motivations. He has weighed his decisions thoughtfully. He has poked and prodded ideas and concepts, and spends time thinking about how Willets can be a better place. He has questioned staff and their reports thoroughly, and has strived to ensure that only the very best ideas are carried forward. He has done so while being very kind to me and to all the staff here. He has served with honesty and integrity. Although he likes to tell people he is a city guy from Pittsburgh, clearly he will also always be a Willets guy, a small-town guy, and we will all miss him very much, and we all wish you the best. So, thank you. And I invite anyone at this time to come and say a few words, and I...
Karen Stevenson, HR. Tonight, I'd like to pay tribute to Ron's dedication, your commitment, and your innovative approach as you have served the city of Willets over the years. On this night, the last night of your service to the city, we need to affirm just how much you will be missed, just how much you have contributed to our community, and just how much your presence and input will continue to hold a special place in all of our hearts. Thank you for always challenges, challenging us to become the best at what we do. You will always be remembered for all your never-ending questions that lasted long into the night. Your dedication, knowledge, and experience will be missed. Very few people dedicate themselves to their job the way that you have. Greta will have some very big shoes to fill. Kathy is sorry she would not be here on your last night on the council. She asked me to let you know that over the years of working with you on the council, you have showed her that you can love your work if you love the people you work with. It's sad to say goodbye, but it's great to know you are headed on to your next adventure. Now, it's time to take some time for yourself and for your family. Keep in mind, no one actually stops working, they just get a new job. And I'm sure your wife will have plenty of work for you anyway. You have left your indelible mark in our hearts and on this city. We wish you one of success and happiness in your future endeavors. May they be all that you hope for. As you move on to the next amazing chapter of your life, know that you will be missed, and our very best wishes and thoughts go with you. Come and visit us often, for this is a farewell and not a goodbye.
He's gonna have to squirm.
You know, I...
Go ahead, Jim.
When I was police chief, I knew that Ron would read, and our police chief is not here today, I again sense his regards, but I knew that Ron read his packet from front to back. I remember once we had night sights for our guns on there that we had purchased, and Ron wanted to know what those were. I believe I took him in the back room, shut off the lights, and showed him what night sights were, but he saw the line item in the packet and wanted to know what those were that we were spending that money on. So, that comes to mind as a staff member, and I told Ron earlier, I've learned a lot. We haven't always agreed, but that's what government's all about, but up here, but at times, as a staff member, I always felt very supported by Ron. So, thank you very much for your service, and I wish you guys well. Thank you.
Yeah, Jim.
Oh, this is gonna get ugly.
I've had the pleasure of being the city attorney for about 15 years, and Ron has been on the council a good many of those years, and it's been a good experience for me working with you. And was always conscious of the Ron factor before a meeting. If I'm writing a report, if I'm writing some kind of agenda summary, I'm trying to anticipate, what is Ron gonna say? What questions is he gonna ask? And try to anticipate, because I knew that you would study everything carefully and would come prepared with a list of questions, and I got to the point where I could often anticipate the Ron factor, the Ron questions, but not always. You kept me on my toes, and so you made me a better city attorney for that. And Ron didn't always agree with my analysis, and if I failed the city, Ron would tell me, he'd call me on the carpet, but if I did a good job, he'd give me praise. And so, I appreciate having the opportunity to work with you, Ron. Thank you.
I'd also like to thank Ron for his wonderful years of service. The six years I've been on council, we've been working side by side on many things, including some ad hoc committees, and I think it's already been said that Ron really does his homework, he's very conscientious, he really pays attention to the details, and wants us to do things right. And we don't always agree on what that is, but we, we're all coming out with better decisions by having that kind of dialogue and having those kind of hard questions get asked, and I really appreciate it. I've been here for 12 years, and I've only been here for half as many, and it takes a lot of dedication to serve the city this way. So, thank you very much, Ron.
Thank you for your time and your love of our community. It takes a lot to serve in this capacity, and to serve the city well. Thank you.
Thanks. I would like to say thank you to Ron for being on the council for a number of years. I've been with him for a number of years, and the only thing I can say, that is, a lot of things I could say that were positive, but the one thing that keeps coming to my mind is that Virginia would say, "What time you think you're gonna get home tonight?" And I would say, "Depends upon Ron, what Ron comes up with," and so, that's pretty much the way it is, and that's a compliment. I want you to know that. And so, I think that he will be missed. The things that he has done and brought forward have been very thoughtful, because I don't know about everybody else on the council, but there are things, and reading the agenda and going over it and stuff, that I would have never anticipated, and Ron has pretty much figured them out, and, or at least to ask the question. And I think that that's really what it's all about, is to make sure that we cover every bit of it that we can, and in order to make the best decisions that we can. So, thank you very much, Ron.
Thank you.
And be a good person, and think about me when you're on the beach, okay?
My turn?
I have a little something for you. Oh, yes. Do you want to...
Oh, yeah. I mean, for the roast, you always have to have a rebuttal.
It won't take long.
My wife calls me anal because I always pursue things. First of all, I want to give thanks to Greg Connie and Larry Stransky, because after my first term on the council in 2006, when I ran for reelection, the two of them didn't do it intentionally, but they kind of teamed up and gave me a four-year vacation. And it gave me a chance to think about things, because the first year, the first term on the council, in, I came on kind of strong, and I made some people unhappy, I know that, but I had four years to contemplate all of these things, and when I came back in 2010, I think I had improved quite a bit. So, thank you. You might have noticed that I ask questions, lots of questions. I have observed many different reactions from my fellow council members and folks in the audience when I ask questions, ranging from the eye-rolling, "There he goes again," to, "Hmm, that's interesting, I never thought of that." Where did this annoying habit come from? Why do I have this insatiable need to ask questions, to learn stuff? Again, with the questions. This is not a unique characteristic. Many people are curious and need to know how things work, why they work or don't, and how to make it work better. We all know someone who has, by the way, I'm reading this because I think a lot of you have learned that if I speak off the cuff, it goes all over the place, so I like to repair my remarks. We all know someone who has a deep interest in car engines, for example, and has always taken them apart to learn how they work and how to make them run better. It's pretty much the same with me. It's not just idle curiosity, but a desire to understand the job and do it well. I was first elected to the city council in 2002, after having attended every council meeting since 1998. I did my homework, and I learned. I was fascinated by observing and finally taking part in the process, especially the part about doing the job according to the wishes of the people, representing and acting on the will of the people, representative government, the very foundation of our democratic system of government. So, for me, the questions began. How exactly does this work? How am I supposed to know what the people really want, and how do the people know what they want? The theory is that we speak to our constituents, and they tell us what they want. Simple. But how many different people do we talk to over time, and who are these folks? Are they like-minded friends and acquaintances who think as I do, or do they represent a wide range of opinions? And if they don't agree with my positions, how much credibility or seriousness should I or would I give to their opinions? And how much do they actually know about the issue being discussed? It never ceases to amaze me about how little many people know about what's going on in this town. Facebook was filled with questions from people who weren't aware that Main Street was being redesigned, and why weren't they told about this? On top of that, it's a reality that most people don't really care or need to care about what anyone else wants or needs. It's not their job to do so. It's all about what they want. It's human nature. Despite our efforts to the contrary, we each walk into this room with our own set of beliefs and agendas. We are admonished to leave all of that outside and to rely on reports and testimony that we receive from staff, outside experts, and public comment before and during the meeting. But too often, there is the incessant pressure to give in to our personal biases regarding a particular issue that can overpower our desire to be impartial. As a council member, my job is to really care about what everyone needs and what's best to satisfy the majority, to give them what they want and need, and what's the best course of action that will benefit the majority. Knowing what that is, though, is the tricky part, and the best way that I discovered to learn what's best for the majority in the long run is to ask questions. Take the thing apart and look at it from every conceivable angle. Ask provocative questions that get the rest of the team thinking about the hidden problems with the project and finding better ways to resolve them. Synergism, I love that word. That's when people working together achieve more and better results than a lot of people working alone. When I ask the questions that dig deep down to the core of the matter, I see city staff members taking notes and pondering the questions and answers, and inevitably, we come up with a far better solution than we had before. Now, I'm fairly certain that I didn't succeed in making everyone happy with my questions or decisions, but at the end of the day, I was able to sleep well, knowing that I gave an honest accounting of myself. It's been an honor to serve this community. When Brenda and I came here 21 years ago, I, this is the first small town, as you pointed out, that we were gonna live in, ever, and, and I just knew instinctively that there would be many opportunities presented to, to be part of the community, to participate, to maybe make a difference, and it's been very rewarding because of that. Conventional wisdom says that public employees are, well, they don't often get a good rap. You know, it, it's the stereotype of the person who's on the public dole, but I have to say in absolute, full honesty, I have never worked with a finer bunch of people in my life, and I've worked with a lot of people. This, this crew here, the city staff, is an amazing bunch of folks, and I don't think they get nearly as much credit as they deserve, as they've earned. You know, we're the stars up here, we're the top of the food chain, and everybody looks at us, and we sit up here making speeches and making intelligent statements, and, you know, everybody looks at us with awe and everything. I mean, it gets tiring when you walk down the street, and people constantly bow and screech away. But, you know, it, it's the thing, you know, we're, we're the visible ones. These guys and gals, they, they do their jobs, and if they ever get any recognition, it's because something is not working completely right. You know, the pothole wasn't filled, the, the water is dirty, or something. There's always something, but when, when everything is working fine, nobody notices them. Well, I'm here to tell you, I notice them, and I really, really appreciate the work and the effort and the dedication that this city staff puts into their job. I mean, I, I've, I've worked for a lot of companies, and very often, when you would like to see something done, you, you make the request, and then you, you pray. But I, it never ceases to amaze me that when something is put out there, a week later, it's getting done, or it's getting acted on. It's amazing. So, I really want to thank every one of you that I've had the honor and pleasure to work with. And you guys, eh, you know, we've had our moments, but you know, that's what it's about. You know, it's, it makes me nervous whenever we're all in agreement, because that means we're missing something. You know, there has to be that conflict, there has to be the questions and the arguments and the passion that goes along with it, because if we don't do that, then we're gonna miss something. Sure as shootin', we're gonna miss something. So, I, even though we've had our moments, I really appreciate working with you all, and I'm gonna miss this part of it. So, anyway.
I think Stephanie has something for you.
Oh, okay. I'll stick around.
Photo op. Come on down.
Go down?
Come on down.
Goodbye, Steve. Take good care of Greta. I'm expecting great things.
Very accurate.
Direct words. Do you all get your picture? You got the picture?
Pull that plaque out so we can see it.
I've never done this before.
It's got a real camera.
Now, we would, we would like to adjourn and invite everyone to have a piece of cake and celebrate Ron, and everybody can shake his hand and all that good stuff.
And following that, we're going to have a swearing-in of the newly-elected council members, so come right back after you have your piece of cake.
Yes.
Make it a... Okay, we are going to reconvene our meeting, and at this point, we are having Stephanie swear in our newly-elected council members, so...
I would like to ask Greta Connie and Larry Stransky to come up here while we will administer the oath of office.
Sure, Jim.
Would you both raise your right hand?
You want it to be better over here?
Yes, I think that would be better. We, Larry Stransky and Greta Connie, do solemnly swear that we will affirm, we will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that we will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that we take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that we will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which we are about to enter.
I do.
I now pronounce you councilmember to the city of Willetts.
Thank you.
You have something to sign?
I have to sign.
I guess, yeah.
Here you go.
I'm the officer.
I say yes.
I should've been better directing. Kathy's much better than I am. And that's a looking tournament. This one's right. I'm gonna do that.
of newly elected council members, the mayor shall call for nominations from the floor for mayor. The nomination must receive a second and be accepted by the nominee prior to a vote on the nomination. Nominations will be voted upon in the order made. Once the nomination receives a majority vote of council members present, no further action will be taken on subsequent nominations. The mayor shall then pass the gavel to the newly elected mayor, who shall assume the role of presiding officer. Immediately following election of the mayor, the same procedure shall be followed for the election of the vice mayor."
However, we haven't done it that way for any of the years that I've been here, and Kathy has always advised us to have the city manager chair the meeting when we nominate a new chair or a new mayor. And so, in deference to the tradition of what we've actually been doing, and also to make sure that it's a non, a person who doesn't have a stake in the game, I would like our city manager to chair while we take any nominations for the mayorship.
And I thank you, and I will accept that role. Therefore, at this time, I will call for nominations for mayor for the City of Willets.
I would like to nominate Jerry Garcia.
Gonzalez.
Gonzalez. At least you know where my mind is.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And Greta will second, and does the nominee accept the nomination?
I do.
All right, then according to this procedure, we now take a vote, and I will let you step in for that part of it.
Can I start with Jerry?
I think that you will.
Yes. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Oh, well, yes for me.
Yes, I do.
Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
No.
Mayor Shum.
Yes.
All right, well, then, the vote is four to one, and then it looks like we have Mayor Garcia.
I always require that he plays us music at his...
Exactly. Okay. And would you like me to continue for the vice mayor? Okay, we are accepting nominations for vice mayor.
I would like to nominate Larry Stransky for vice mayor.
Right. Do we hear a second?
I'll second that.
And Greta seconds. And again, we're going to take the role.
Well, does he accept?
Oh, does he accept?
Yes.
He accepts.
Councilmember Sean?
No.
Stransky?
Yes.
Connie?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
No.
All right. Then we'll... It was three, two, four, yes?
Yes.
Then we have a vice mayor.
Am I moving to the end?
No, you just stay there.
Okay.
Actually, the newest council member goes at the end.
Right.
And I think I would take your seat.
Manch.
This is very exciting.
Yes, I think I take the seat here, and Suprema will take the seat.
Actually, it goes by seniority.
Right. Yes, the newest at the end, you know, the oldest at the end.
The man who stops still.
Anyhow, it's okay.
But it's, you know, according to the...
I'll get that. I just don't know the rest of the...
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's been happening all my life.
So, according to the policies and procedures, the city attorney just pointed out to me that following the election of the mayor and vice mayor, and at such other times as the mayor deems it necessary, the mayor shall establish the diocese seating arrangement of the council members. The vice mayor shall always be seated immediately next to the mayor.
I think we accomplished that, so, okay. I guess at this point, we have item 3F, presentation from the Willets Economic Corporation regarding the Paint Your Town Project. Do we have a representative?
Yes.
Is that the...
He's going to use the keyboard, I believe.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Dusty.
Boy, all this excitement before the slideshow. God. I'm Paul Jacobson, and I am the coordinator for Painting the Town Project, and I'm also a member of WELL. This slide has been up here for about an hour now, so I imagine everyone's had a chance to look at it. It's really about WELL that was established and is a community organization since 2004. These are a couple photos from the projects and activities that we sponsored in the last few years, the Energy Efficiency Tour, the Bike Show. The mitigation tour was the first one, which was just amazing to see what groups are doing to restore the wetlands after the bypass. And along with these activities, we support local food, the list was on there. I hope you've all heard of WELL, and if not, there's more at the end of the slideshow I can share. There's a couple more activities. The Business Fair was a big hit, as you can see how many people attended. We also had an entrepreneurs' conversation fair in the beginning of this year, and out of that came ideas that led to the Paint the Town movement. So the way that WELL works is we have a monthly meeting for the board, and any of us who wants to sponsor a project just presents it. And this particular project was my idea, that was pretty much a synthesis of a lot of ideas from other people, from the brown bag lunches that we sponsored in 2017 after the bypass opened, how to survive the bypass was the topic. People had lots of ideas, and following entrepreneurs. My first presentation for this meeting, for this project, came in June, and these are some, this is what I prepared. Would you have this match for...
Oh, yeah.
I was just listing things that we could paint in this town to brighten it up, liven it up. For me, as a therapist, the town would be depressed. As people are depressed, this town has looked depressed. So in 2017, we started planting sunflowers and supported the Thousand Sunflower Project. Lots of community people were interested, the farmer's market was, we were giving out starts, several of the businesses, Suprema planted sunflowers in front of Imagination Station, Mariposa Market was spectacular, and from that, I was thinking, okay, what else can we do? This year, 2018, Caltrans is working all year, tearing up Main Street, and so we came up with Painting the Town. This alphabetical list, I was just playing around in preparation for my presentation, and lo and behold, I thought of all these things that we could paint around Willets to brighten it up and lively it up a little bit. So I'm only missing Y. If anybody can think of a Y item. Anyway, so we kicked off the project, actually, in September 2018, and here, these were our, the items that we were focusing on. We decided to start with what was easy to paint, what was rather inexpensive and small. The K-rails are the largest by far, and the murals have been quite a project. It's still ongoing. This whole program was designed to be a community project, to engage people, to get involved, because the more you are active, the less you're sitting around being depressed. So the more people that painted, and more people that worked and helped, the more energy was created, and so the first, our first day was September 16th. But here's the K-rails before, and if you remember them, they were pretty difficult looking before, and here's our first workday, community involvement. This was held on the 13th. We couldn't paint the K-rails until they were cleaned, and cleaning the K-rails would have been amazingly difficult, if not, and time-consuming, if not impossible, without the help of the Little Lake Fire Department and Chris Wilks. Thank you. That allowed us, in about four hours, to really make a dent in these things. We cleaned them all, it was a lot of work, pretty difficult, and then the 16th was our kickoff, and we got right to priming. The first day, we had almost 20 people show up to help. This is after we worked for a while and a few people had gone. You might recognize a few folks there. I see John Hascheck up in the corner. It was hard work, and we accomplished it, we wouldn't have accomplished it without the help of the volunteers in the community. These are the designers of the murals that we finally settled on, and Rebecca, Alea, and Carolyn Bakewell and her class from the high school, and more volunteers and community members working to paint. And the more people that painted, the more they felt like ownership of our town. Here's the high school students working on their mural. This is Alea's mural that's facing commercial, and in early forms, it's been painted quite a bit since then, and the chicken from the high school mural. Here's a, this is what it looks like right now with the hummingbird and the bee. Here's the Main Street facing mural by Rebecca. It's really, this is on six of the cement barricades, the K-rails, and it's very difficult to get a photo to show the whole thing. It's not finished, this is the, these are the last two, and she's still working on them. This has been an ordeal to do these, it's very difficult to paint cement, it's very difficult to paint things that are two and a half feet high, and besides that, turning a small thumbnail-sized design into a 12-foot-long mural is also a challenge. So none of us were prepared for what this would take. Some more from the high school. The other, another part of the project was to paint the trash receptacles. This is Brian Weller, and a before picture of what they still look like today, quite a difference. At present, there are four that have been approved. The designs need to go through the city for final approval, and so four have been approved, I believe, and they'll be pursuing that in the near future, when the rain allows. These are some other painting projects by Brian, next to the Noyo. He got permission from the waste folks to paint their trash bins there, and the idea for painting the meters, I think, is something that we need to pursue in the future for the businesses. All these things can be just like little interesting twists around the community for people walking around, or tourists, or visitors. We have an idea to make a scavenger hunt for visitors to actually see pictures of some of these and find them. And then the fire hydrant project, which has been the main thing that I've been involved in. Same ideas to get the community involved. The fire hydrants have not been painted in many years, this is what they look like. Two out of three of the varieties in, around Willets, it's been an education learning about them. Here's a couple of us painting and beginning the work. This is the one next to Ace Hardware, and then across from the post office, and another one is across, the one that Julia on the far right is across from, near Mariposa.
I heard several people comment early on that they were worried that the fire department wouldn't be able to find them, but when you look at how they looked before, how easily you would not see them, but they stand out so beautifully now.
There are many fire hydrants at the south end of town that are hardly noticeable. I mean, you can drive by 20 times and not see them all. Now they're noticeable. These are a few that are completed that are around town. Brian's by the fire department, Ores is over by the playground across the street. Here's another one of Brian's. The one in the middle I did over, across from, it's West Valley, across from the dentist's office over there, and this one is downtown with the dog on Main Street.
By the doggy daycare.
By the doggy daycare. There's two more. Kristen Lewis is not done with hers, I know that, and David's is in front of the liquor store. And, and the idea for painting the meters, I think, is something that we need to pursue in the future for the businesses. All these things can be, just like little interesting twists around the community for people walking around, or, or tourists, or visitors. We have an idea to, to make a scavenger hunt for visitors to actually see, see pictures of some of these and find them. And then, the fire hydrant project, which has been the main thing that I've been involved in. Same ideas to get the community involved. The fire hydrants have not been painted in many years. This is what they look like. Two out of three of, of the varieties in, around Willets. It's been an education learning about them. Here's a couple of us painting and, and beginning the work. This is the one next to Ace Hardware. And then, across from the post office. And another one is across, the one that Julia on the far right is across from, near Mariposa.
I heard several people comment early on that they were worried that the fire department wouldn't be able to find them. But when you look at how they looked before, how easily you would not see them. But they stand out so beautifully now.
There are many fire hydrants at the south end of town that are hardly noticeable. I mean, you can drive by 20 times and not see them all. Now, they're noticeable. These are a few that are completed, that are around town. Brian's by the fire department. Ora's is over by the playground across the street. Here's another one of Brian's. The one in the middle I did over, across from, it's West Valley, across from the dentist's office over there. And this one is downtown with the dog on Main Street.
They're the doggy daycare.
By the doggy daycare. There's two more. Kristen Lewis is not done with hers, I know that. And, and David's is in front of the liquor store. This one is done by Ora and her daughters on West Mendocino. And then, another high school student involved. That one's right in front of the high school. A few more. Melanie Moore has made a lot of progress on hers since this picture was taken. It's in front of the museum. And Vanessa, I believe, has also progressed on that one. Robyn's has been done for a while over by the post office. And the one in the middle is the most recent completed earlier this week. Ashley Rodriguez finished that one next to Ace Hardware.
Ace copy.
Ace copy, I'm sorry. And then, two unfinished ones, one by me and one by Deora. This is an early version of Robyn's. I, I just saw that she's done quite a bit more work on it. It looks spectacular right now, down to far into the park. And the one on the, the right side, there are two there, but it's actually one hydrant. And I think it's the gold medal winner right now. It's just incredible. You can look at it for quite a while and examine all the little details. I'm very impressed with all of these being different. A lot of the same colors are used, and yet, the, the result is completely different for each artist. The other part of the project has to do with, this is what we, we are living with downtown. Last I checked, there were 24 empty storefronts. And there's still way too many. So, we came up, mostly Bill Barksdale contributed this idea to actually put artwork in these empty buildings in the, in the windows. I think it's a win-win for the business owners, for artists, and for the town. Because it'll bring more interest in the place and maybe get some, some new businesses in. Here's the only one that's been completed so far. And this is, these are photos by Reece Locom.
It's been very hard to get property owners to even respond that they're willing to put things in their empty storefront windows. But we will be doing more if we get approvals.
Yeah, so, right, right now, I mean, this is part of the community that, that contributed to this, either by painting, or, or time and energy. The main group that have really brought this together are the first four names, in many, many ways, contributing to, to make this happen. Currently, there are 17 fire hydrants that are reserved and ready to be painted. So, I think this is 18 that I showed. There are 17 more that are ready to go. And so, that will be some 35 fire hydrants in town that are, are painted and looking bright and fresh. We're, we're trying to get a grant. We could probably apply for a grant so we can pursue more of the trash bins and pay some of the artists to get their designs and, and continue with some larger things. We would like to paint the bridges over, that go over the, the waterways, the streams that come through town, the railings that are on there, and the utility boxes that are on the corners. So, the utility boxes are, have been painted in Eureka, I'm told. So, they have.
Did you connect up with Eureka at all, or?
I haven't, I haven't yet. I keep wanting to get that information.
Oh, I see.
Match has it, and it's never found its way to me, but it will. And I did talk to Caltrans, and, because they still are in charge of the utility boxes, At some point, they will relinquish that, and then, we'll get permission from the city. We can still pursue them too, to, to finalize that. So, questions?
Just comment. Great job.
Mary has a question for you.
At your first of your presentation, you said that people were depressed and bought the freeway. I'm a business owner that has a business in town. And I thought it was a really good thing, because we have lost a lot of the big trucks that used to come through town. And made a lot of noise and, and pollution and this type of thing. And I commend this, this is very nice. But I was not aware of that, because the people that I had talked to was happy that the, that the freeway was going around town. And we knew that it would be a little bit tough for a while for the business owners, but that we knew that it would come back. And so, I want to thank you very much for your help.
I, yeah, I want to, let me clarify that. I wasn't, I, I wasn't implying that individual people were depressed because of it. That may be the case. It was more or less, the town was a symptom, sort of, of, it looked depressed with so many empty buildings and closed businesses and, and boarded-up windows. That's what I, that looked like depression. And that wasn't strictly me saying that. Many people said that at our meetings, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
First of all, good. Thank you, Ron, Brenda. Did anybody have any questions for Paul? I, I'm looking for the, uh.
Thank you, Ron.
Public out there before we move on? Nope?
I just wanted to mention that it's not only a collaboration of a lot of volunteers, but we have been in touch with the Chamber of Commerce, with the Willets Center for the Arts, with the high school, obviously, and with the fire department, and have had a lot of cooperation and assistance on many aspects of the project. And so, I think that's, you know, energizing those who actually volunteer, but other people who just hear about it and walk by and see all these sort of whimsical little fire hydrants around town. And puts a smile on their face. So, it's been really fun to do.
Ron, I just want to say, you guys put your paint where your mouth was. I appreciate that. Yeah, when these things come before us, you kind of wonder what it's going to look like. But it looks like it's really positive, so I, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, we have informational update on implementation of the Willets Main Street Corridor Enhancement Plan.
I have a copy, thank you.
I wasn't sure who didn't, did any.
It's always good to offer one.
Handing out copies of the Main Street Plan. Apparently, I have two copies left, so if anyone wants to purchase.
You're on.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm wondering what kind of mayor Jerry Garcia would have made.
He had good ice cream.
Yeah. I don't know if he would have fit in well in the notes or not. Mayor Gonzalez, councilmembers Dusty Dooly, I'm your community development director. This is an update on the city's portion of the implementation of the Main Street Corridor Enhancement Plan. That's the plan that, that's in front of you there. Just very quickly, before I go on to the presentation, in your packet, you should have the agenda summary, a staff report, along with a number of attachments, including the Main Street conceptual designs that was adopted back in 2016, the city's street tree list, some sample paver designs, as well as some of the conceptual designs that were, were part of our Main Street Plan. I want to start by just showing some of the conceptual plans that were, that were part of the, the Main Street project here, just to kind of remind us of, of where we're going. And then, talk about some of the individual improvements that, that we have planned to implement, and go over some of the remaining challenges, mostly funding, as well as a timeline, when we hope to have these improvements in place. I'm going to get closer. This is a view looking north at Mendocino Avenue. You, you're looking on Main Street here. And with the Main Street conceptual plan, the designers really tried to put in as many street trees as they could. I'll talk about a little bit more of that later. We certainly plan to put as many as we can into, but this is just a slightly unrealistic. What you'll see here are some of the improvements that we're going to be talking about again tonight, some of the bull bouts to shorten the crosswalk distance for pedestrian safety, some of the extended sidewalks that allow us to put some additional improvements in there, whether it's trees or rain gardens, or additional area for public seating, public art, et cetera. You can see the bike lane that's already been striped. You should note that, that Caltrans still has a couple days to, to work on that. And I can't tell you when that's going to happen, because it's really dependent on, on weather. Moving forward, this is a closer view of the Main Street Mendocino Avenue intersection. You can see the, the parking lot for Pete Swanson's business there, or his building there in the, in the Main Street Cafe. Cafe 107.
77.
No, not our Dallas. And then, again, you can see some of the, the, the streetlights that, that we'd like to put in. That's not a design that we chose, that's just showing some new streetlights. Again, it's, you're seeing a closer-up view of the bull bouts and the extended sidewalks there. And again, as many trees as it can fit into the picture. Here's a, a view looking from the Commercial Street, looking south down Main Street. You can see, again, some of the, the new striping pattern that's, that's been put in place recently. You can see there's an enhanced crosswalk there at Van Lane.
Question on that? They have not striped that. Is, is that going to wait for the city to do, the enhanced crosswalk?
Yeah, yeah. And, and there probably deserves to be more discussion about the crosswalk at, at Van Lane. There, there are some pros and cons to putting a crosswalk there. My, my guess, my feel is that Caltrans did stripe that because they didn't think that was a safe place to cross. And that's really due to its proximity to the Commercial Street and Main Street intersection. So, it's sitting there waiting at the light to go, and then, you get to stop again real quick. But there are some advantages to, to putting a crosswalk there as well. And many of the people that participated in the planning process, you know, specifically wanted not only a crosswalk there, but something with some type of design feature that really made it stick out.
Dusty, will we, as we tweak our design, would it be necessary to take it in front of a graphic engineer to kind of give it a blessing, or does this overall?
Yeah, no, these are conceptual plans, and, and we have really smart engineers. And so, you know, before these improvements actually happen, it'll all be better than them. Sometimes reality can disrupt conceptual plans. So, I, I would expect that this, that this specific crosswalk, Van Lane, would, would be revisited. But, but I should also mention, I mean, staff's goal is to implement this plan. That's the direction we have, and, and that's, that's, that's where we're going with this. Tonight, tonight's giving you an update, showing you the progress that's been made so far, and, and what we've been able to accomplish so far, and where, where we're trying to go. So, this is the intersection at Wood Street here. So, again, you can see some of the same improvements that I, that I've been discussing, where you have these, these bull bouts. I should also mention that Caltrans, although they didn't construct the bull bouts, they're willing to stripe them. I think that's a benefit to us, because again, you don't want these bull bouts to constrain the ability for the vehicles that use the road to be able to, to travel safely throughout the city. So, that can give us a, a trial look at them. And then, again, you know, really, city staff, including our engineering staff, will, will either, you know, shorten them or fine-tune them as, as necessary. So, I want to go over some of the, the individual improvements that were identified in our plan, and let you know where we are as far as funding and, and timeline for, for installation. Like I mentioned, that the Main Street Plan envisioned planting as many trees as appropriate. Our, our code tells us that we need to be careful where we put trees. You know, so, for instance, we, you know, we have a general requirement that trees be spaced 20 to 50 feet apart, depending on the size of the tree, 15 feet from street lights, so the tree isn't feeding the, the new light, eight feet from driveways, so we avoid creating sight distance issues, et cetera. So, we'll be following those guidelines as we look to, as to where to, to put the street trees. There's 34 different species of trees on our street tree list. That's included in your packet. Revide Ed, or Revitalization Economic Development Committee meeting identified five specific species to be planted, and that includes Craig Burnell, Chinese Pistach, Autumn Blaze Maple, Scarlet Sentinel Maple, and Holly Oak. What was nice is these are actually trees that were already on our street tree list. We, we haven't identified funding yet to support the planting of the new, new street trees. However, we have submitted a grant request in the last few weeks that, amongst many other things, would pay for 50 new street trees to be installed. We are expecting the date of the grant award notification to be May 2019. So, so again, I'm, I'm glad that we at least have something out there that we're chasing, but we'll continue to look for other opportunities to fund new street trees as well.
Who did we apply for?
It was a Calfire Urban Forestry Grant.
And just to clarify, the cost of the individual trees that have been identified previously, it wasn't just for the tree, it was for the installation of the tree, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. So, it, it's, it's not just buying a tree. We're looking to actually create a space for it, excavate soil, put, put down the correct soil, other little tricks to, to ensure that the, well, not ensure, but hedge our bets, so to speak, so that the roots grow down and not up into the sidewalk. And we're looking to use the services of a contractor to, to help us with those, with those tree plantings, yeah. So, rather than, you know, when we're talking, we're asking for $2,500 per tree, and it's because of those associated costs that go with it, yeah. Thank you for, for asking for that clarification. The, the streetlights, it, it may be that we can use the half-cent sales tax to pay for new streetlights. We haven't picked out a specific design yet. At the Revide Ed level, we talked about having aesthetically pleasing streetlights, something that could both support flower baskets and street banners. The city, I should also note, the city needs to hire an electrical engineer to design an electrical system to power those. The good news is that Caltrans did put conduit under the sidewalk on both sides, so that conduit is available for, for electrical. And it would not only support streetlights, but any other types of lights or anything else that would need to be electrified on Main Street as well. And, and these would supplement existing lighting, they wouldn't replace the existing lighting. We have a number of improvements that were shown on there. They're related to pedestrian safety. That's the, the construction of the bull bout, bull bouts, the, some, a couple mid-block pedestrian refuge, refuges. And so, again, this is trying to get pedestrians out away from the parked cars, so that they have a better chance of seeing the, the traveling vehicles, and the vehicles have a better chance of, of seeing the pedestrians. These are also improvements that are eligible to be funded under a half-cent sales tax. I showed you the, the extended sidewalks that are in, shown in the conceptual plans. Those become opportunities to put public art up, the rain gardens, benches, more, more trees, whatever the, the council decides. A, a major topic of discussion at the revitalization, the Revide Ed Committee, was what to do with the planter strips. Folks are aware of the planter strips that were installed by Caltrans. They're typically about three feet wide. Right now, they're just filled with wood chips. It was quite unanimous amongst those that attended the meeting, that the wood chips was, was not the final solution, and that something else should be put in there. It was noted that they can be a tripping hazard, they're not pretty, weeds grow up in them, they can be filled with water. And the suggestion at Revide Ed was that we put pavers down. There's a few photos in your packet, and a, here on the slideshow as well, of some different pavers. There's a lot of varieties that we could choose from. Staff's loose estimate at this point, we'll have a better estimate once we get has-built plans from Caltrans, is that to put down pavers within the planting strips would cost around $200. around $200,000. We just got some sample ones, these just something so you kind of get an idea of the variety that's out there. You can get colorful with it. That's actually, so, and I should mention that, you know, we talked about doing pavers in the planting strips. You could also maintain some areas for some type of landscaping, vegetation. This looks like it would function as sort of a rain garden. At the Revide Ed meeting, we did not have an identified funding source to pay for the pavers, but staff looked into it and we did find that we do have some funds that we could use to pay for the pavers if we wanted. And that's funds from the Regional Surface Transportation Program Funds, commonly referred to as D1 Funds. The city currently has 272,000 available D1 Funds that are administered by MCOT, the Mendocino Council of Governments. I asked how much money goes into that fund typically on an annual basis and it's somewhere between 75,000 and $100,000 annually. So if it ended up being $200,000, we'd have $72,000 left in those funds and we would expect, the estimate right now is about $98,000 would come in the next fiscal cycle. I don't know if that's January 1 or, you know, June 1st or something. But those are funds that we confirmed are available, that we do have, that we could spend on the pavers. And I should...
May I ask a question?
Yeah. I wanted to know whether there was a problem about putting in the pavers with storm drainage, whether that is designed so that they won't end up with a lot of water on the pavement, on the sidewalks? Over the... Can the pavers be permeable?
Yeah, I think they could be. We would also need to install drain outlets within them. I think right now, a lot of the sidewalk is actually designed to drain into the planter strips. And so, you're right, those pavers would displace water and we would need to design the drains so that they then move into the next storm drain.
Can I, I'm just going to throw in. The paver idea also was a, was referred from Revide Ed to this council and this council actually talked about that, discussed the papers in some detail at the council level and wanted to move forward on a council level. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Ideally, we would know the location of the streetlights and the street trees and any other improvements that we wanted to put within that planter strip. But the paver design does allow us to remove those at a later basis. So, you know, I think if the council was comfortable with moving with the pavers, we shouldn't be too worried about as far as wasting money or, you know, getting in the way of future projects, you know.
Are they something that, when you put them in, if we decide to put a light in, then we would pop them out and could reuse them in case some got damaged somewhere else?
Yes. I know we can pop them out, I'm looking behind me at our engineer.
More or less, yeah.
So, I would just like to say that I sat on the Revide Ed Committee and there was a lot of feedback from business owners that those planting strips, as they are right now with the mulch, are creating issues for customers getting in and out of their vehicles, having to walk across those to get to sidewalk. As Dusty pointed out, they are a tripping hazard, they're going to fill with water when we get rainy. We've got weeds in them already, we've got them collecting dog poop and trash and they're going to get unsightly. So I think the pavers are a good option.
I agree with that. I think the pavers are the way to go, whatever we decide to do, but that's the really way to do it. I see people that are hard, that have a hard time walking and when they get out of their car, somebody has to help them because it's too much for them to step over the curb onto the, to whatever it is now, the, you know, the chips and stuff and then back. Plus you have the, all the utilities that are in that strip and it's as hard for them to negotiate. So we need something that's even.
Dusty and Stephanie, I guess, I do remember there was kind of consensus on the council to move ahead. Is the next step that engineering works out kind of a game plan and we...
Yes, that's actually what we promised to do. So what we promised to do at the last council meeting is that we had to wait for as-bills for after Caltrans finished the project. And once we have as-bills, we'll have sort of exact dimensions of what we're going to put in there and then we're going to come back to council with designs of different pavers and some pricings and so that you can, you folks can make a final decision. That's what we had sort of promised, is we were waiting for the as-bills.
And as-bills are plans from Caltrans?
Yes, showing exactly what the dimensions are of those areas. We can do estimates.
I just would also like to say, Jeremy, to the engineering department, some of the feedback that I've heard from customers with mobility issues and also from UPS delivery guys, is that things like some of the bricks shown or those really colorful ones are very difficult for things that have wheels. So, something to consider, maybe some of the larger pavers that aren't quite so rigid-y.
I think we would put concrete here.
Jeremy, could you step up for a second? We need to sort of record you for that, so...
Yeah, so...
Thank you.
Pavers aren't 88. They're not, they're not really supposed to be a pedestrian path. I mean, you can walk on them, but they're not wheelchair friendly, they're not walker friendly. So at the parking spaces, we would just put small, three or four foot wide, concrete, smooth spots in between the pavers.
Is there any other questions up here for Jeremy or anybody from the public who'd like to ask something?
I would.
Well, why don't you go up for the television, for the television audience, Tom.
Tom, man, on pavers and concrete, it's also a possible idea that you can use different kinds of pavers in different places for a little design work and have those concrete fill-ins between can also be part of the design. And you can, and you can use a concrete that's a two-sac mix because it doesn't need to be particularly strong, which is very easy to saw and very easy to like just cut through at a wheel. And it'll also save quite a bit of money because that concrete stuff that you put in there can be tinted, it can be tooled, and it can also, it can also save you some money because it's probably about 30% or 40% less expensive to put that down.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment. If anybody wants to see a really well-designed street, as far as I'm concerned, Humboldt Street is a perfect example of what our engineering department came up with. It works really well. Humboldt Street's a really, they did a great job. And pavers are included in that design also on Coast Street. Yeah, Coast Street coming from Safeway North, really a good example. I would just encourage and hope that, you know, when designing streets, I see so many cities and places put so much emphasis on pedestrian, on motorist convenience as opposed to pedestrian safety. And I would really encourage that, you know, we need to make sure pedestrian safety is first and foremost. And if motorist convenience takes a second seat to that, well, that's okay. You know, that's, to me, that's the ultimate. And that means, you know, the bulbous and the, I call them bulbous, I'm not sure what they're, but, you know, the distance between, you know, pedestrian exposure to traffic. You make the bulbous four feet as opposed to six feet on each side, well, you just limited the pedestrian exposure to traffic by four feet. And so, again, that's slowing the traffic down and putting pedestrians, making them a priority as opposed to motorist convenience, pedestrian safety.
Thank you, Pete. Would anybody else like to speak? If not, Dusty, you're back on.
I appreciate the comments. Just to finish off the staff's presentation here, I think what everyone's been, oh, and I had one more slide to put up and I should thank Bill Barksdale. I live vicariously through him and his travels sometimes. This is a picture he took up in Ashland. It does show some pavers. It also shows a streetlight that I think maybe is closer to the design that Revide Ed was thinking about in their recommendation. And you can see that it's able to support the planner, the planner baskets. There's also a streetlight across the street there that supports both the banner and the flower baskets. So I appreciate Bill sending that photo and letting us use it today. What the comment I get the most or the question is, is when are you going to implement these items? We spoke about some of the improvements, we spoke about some of the funding challenges. At least we have a lead on all of them at this point. That being the half-cent sales tax, the D1 funds, and then for the trees, we're hoping to get a grant. And there's a lot of grants out there. If we're not successful on this one, we'll find others. And just because we have this grant going doesn't mean we're going to, you know, stop writing grants until that we find out about that one. We're putting eggs in as many baskets as we can. The timeline for construction is related to when the relinquishment of Main Street happens. Caltrans still needs to complete the Sherwood Road intersection project before relinquishment occurs. The relinquishment process itself can take a few months. The Sherwood project is currently estimated to be completed in the summer of 2019, next year, and which with that point, they'd be eligible to work with the CTC and fully relinquish Main Street from Highway 20 to the northern city limits to the city. And that would happen fall, early winter of 2019. That would put our timeline for completing the improvements that we've gone over in the spring of 2020. So there is a little bit of time that still needs to go by. I should mention that the paver idea, that we're not waiting to 2020. Not sure what the latest update on Caltrans is as far as getting those as-built plans. We're hoping that if we kind of key in that we're really looking for the square footage, the space within the planter strips, that they can give us those numbers sooner. But that information we should be able to get at sooner than later. We've identified funds, it sounds like the council's in support of using those funds to pay for the pavers. So it's just on us to come back with some different choices for the council and the public to look at and then make a final selection and get going on that. So that can happen more immediately relative to the other improvements. That's what staff had to share with you. Happy to answer any more questions that might have.
Yeah, I don't check on Facebook, but apparently there's been a lot of concern that the reduction of parking spaces on Main Street was permanent, and it is not. There's a lot of, Caltrans has not finished the striping for the bike lanes and for some of the other things, so they have a lot of no parking zones that are going to turn into parking spaces. Is that correct?
I think there's a few examples of that, yeah.
Yeah, so just so the public is aware that Caltrans hasn't quite finished the striping and therefore some of the restrictions are due to that, that the construction's ongoing and the weather has not been favorable for them to get it finished, which would be nice to get it finished.
Thanks, Madge.
Dusty, is that it? Unless you've got more questions for me.
All right, thank you very much. All right, I think at this point, we have no ordinances to enact, so information reports, I don't know if we have the right to appeal. Item seven, persons who are, I'll read it out loud just to be clear. People who are, persons who are dissatisfied with the decisions of the city council may have the right to review of that decision by a court. The city has adopted section 1094.6, the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, the time within which decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. Then item eight, commissions, agencies, the city council meets concurrently as a Willits Plan Commission and we successor agency and we have not met in either of those capacities, so. City manager reports and recommendations, item nine.
Yes, Stephanie Gerbert, Sierra City Manager. I had one item I wanted to bring up to folks and that is regarding letters of support regarding grant applications. A couple of months ago, we came before you and discussed having council approval for a legislative agenda so that we could move forward on letters of support for legislative issues brought before us from the League of California City so we didn't have to come to council every time there's a letter of support for some legislation that we would obviously be in favor of. One thing that we did not mention at that time is the other type of letter we often get asked for are letters of support for grant applications. And right now, that has sort of come to a head because the Community Foundation Mendocino County has a grant application open for some community improvements. And I have received three different requests for letters of support for their grant applications. The city typically always puts in a grant for that particular grant as well. It's sort of a neighborhood revitalization grant and they have asked that we submit something pertaining to Main Street. I think that many times, these grant applications are very short-term items and they sort of need something right away and it doesn't, and we don't really have time to prepare a staff report. Typically, if it's a government agency asking for a letter of support for a grant, staff has traditionally just written those sorts of letters because it's reciprocal and sort of government agencies write those for one another. I would like to propose sort of a solution for this because it's hard to sort of determine, gosh, who do we write a letter of support for? And it might be a way to deal with this if someone is proposing a grant to benefit the city of Willets in some way, that the council simply authorize staff to write a letter of support for that if it's something, you know, clearly that would benefit the city. Currently, there are three grant applications that are pending that I know of, that I've received requests for, either formally or informally. Our KLG is looking for, in that grant, they would like, they're putting a grant submitted for a generator so that they can operate during emergencies, which is clearly beneficial to the city. WELL is looking for a grant for, to assist their Paint the Town project. And I believe the Lions have mentioned that they are looking for some grant money to assist them in upgrading some facilities at Rec Grove. I know that the city is also seeking funds for a particular sidewalk project, not a sidewalk project, a crosswalk project in front of the high school. And Bill Wilson could actually speak to that. It's, we're looking for things under $10,000 but in that range. And this would, is a very, very needed traffic safety issue. And it would be, and maybe, Bill, if you could just maybe briefly talk about that. But basically, what I'm looking for is some support from council or just some sort of policy, how to move forward on these grant letters. A motion would be great.
I would go with the recommended action, please.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
All right.
I was going to make the motion, but I have no chance.
All right. And any further discussion, otherwise maybe I'll listen to Bill and then we move.
Yeah, if, Bill could just tell you about the grant application that we're proposing for this grant? And also, I had one other request for a letter of support that I want to bring up after that as well.
Actually, what we're looking for is flashing beacon lights like down at McDonald's for a state in Maine with the high slow traffic coming across at lunchtime and everything else. They'd be solar panelled. They say three to five years on the batteries, so we'll see what happens. But that'd be a nice, actually, I got pictures, but not here, but I think it's well worth the time we spend on it.
Yeah, I just, my comment about that is that I think even though we might be competing against some of the other groups that are also asking for grants and they might be competing with each other, we don't have to make that final decision. The grant agency's going to do that. And if it benefits the city, then I think the more the merrier that we should support them and then they'll support us and so forth. That's why I think we should go ahead and write letters of support.
Okay.
Stephanie, did you have something else?
And if you guys, I had one other issue, but it's a little bit separate from that. So if you want to vote on that, that would be wonderful.
All right, so we have a motion second. Any further discussion? No, no, call for the vote? All those included?
Bye.
Bye. All right, thank you. Motion carried.
The other issue that's come forward is in November, you received a report from Todd McMahon of NCRM regarding our reforestation project and timber harvesting project. And that project consisted of culling the damaged trees from the fires and marketing those and collecting... and collecting grants for a reforestation project. And this was to, in large part for fire safety, is to clear out the wood. When Todd made his presentation, he also discussed something regarding another avenue for his, for a project that has not been approved yet by this council, but he did sort of, but he talked about it in some detail, and I wanted to, and what that is, is creation of a shaded fire break. And that shaded fire break would be a break between our property and along the ridge and adjacent property owners on the other side of our watershed, and CAL FIRE and the Mendocino, the, the Mendocino County Fire Safe Council is applying for a grant to do these shaded fire breaks, and one of the benefits of these is it does not, it's not like a clear-cut fire break. What it does is it, it takes, it leaves 85% of the canopy of the trees, and it leaves all of the mature trees, but it clears out the underbrush and the unmarketable, sort of junk trees underneath, and it makes the space that the fire can go out, but yet not damage the big trees. So it is a fire break, yet without clearing it. And it's, CAL FIRE is very much in favor of this. They see that as a crucial link to fire protection of this area. They are looking for a letter of support because they are seeking grants from the state to finance this, this creation of shaded fire breaks. Of course, they asked us in pretty short notice, and they need a letter by the 19th, and Todd said, oh, but I talked to council about it. I go, yeah, but we didn't actually approve that. So, but it's a, but it's, CAL FIRE is approving it, the county's very up on it, and I'm proposing writing a letter of support for the grant for the county, because it's not our grant, it's the county's grant, but it would be, they are looking to do work on Willetts' property. This does not mean an approval of the property by you. It does not mean that we're agreeing to it, because the actual project will come back to you. All we're doing is trying to sort of beat the deadline and say we are in favor of fire retardant efforts, efforts to...
Mr. Devin, do you need a motion to send a letter?
Basically, I wanted to let you know that this is happening, and I'm not saying, and I have put in language, the city of Willets, while not yet having the opportunity to formally support this plan through council action, has had the plan presented to them in concept. The city of Willets looks forward to seeing a full presentation of the plan in the future. So you will have the opportunity to approve it.
I would tell a motion.
I take direction from the chair. My question is that it's not agendized, do we need to add that, or can we just give direction to staff to go ahead and write a letter rather than make a motion?
Well, that's what I'm looking for, is some direction from you that it's okay to write this letter, that it's not committing any council action, it's more of informing you that this is happening, and that in the future will you have the opportunity to make an informed decision regarding the actual project.
I think because it's not on the agenda, we've got to do it as just a direction to staff.
Yes.
No, but I do agree with Madge that on item nine, that it was discussion, and there was no, no action to be taken on nine.
Yeah, this came up a day ago, so it was, they needed it by Friday, and I thought, well, we're talking about council letters of support for grants, so I would rather bring it up to you than not.
Thank you.
So your other alternative is to amend your agenda, forfeit the vote to have this item to authorize action, because it came up too late to be on your agenda.
So what's the clearest gem of consensus, just for this?
Yeah, if you're, I think it's fine, you're right, that we should be limited by what's on our agenda. We don't have an action item for this on our agenda. The city manager has asked for consensus approval to do something, but if, and that's fine, but really, we shouldn't take formal action without something being on the agenda. So if there was a motion to amend the agenda to add this item...
No motion, just everybody seems...
And making this trickier, we have been in a practice, since this is not us asking for the grant, we have, staff has typically written letters of support for agencies to do this without council action. This has been a practice of the city, so it sort of falls into that category as well. So I'm gonna let you figure out what to do.
Well, I'm fine, I'm fine with you proceeding on the consensus of the council.
I just, I learned about this yesterday. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew what was being done.
It's not a commitment for any expenditure of money at this time.
It is not.
And it's a routine, a letter of support, so...
In the future, will items like this be agendized, and this is just a one-off because this was a strange timing issue?
Well, this is what's hard about grant requests, is often we don't get it in time enough to put it on an agenda, which is why we asked for approval for a legislative agenda. So generally, if it's in within this category, staff then gets permission to sort of do that without coming to for individual letters.
So next time what happened is, we would have probably brought it up at the beginning, we would have amended the agenda to add the other item in there.
Thanks.
Okay. And do you have anything else?
No.
Department recommendations.
Is that gonna work okay?
Yes, definitely.
All right.
I think we have a department that wants to report. HR?
HR?
HR does.
Thank you, I didn't see her hand. Just start working down the list.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, welcome, Brad. As your HR person, I would like to let you know that we are almost fully staffed across the city. We do have one opening that we are searching for, for a police officer, but that person is in the final stages of the selection process, so we're hopeful that next week we will have an answer. But we also, after a long-awaited search for a finance director, although Celia Peterson did very well as our interim, we finally have a, an exceptional employee, and as a finance director, I want to introduce you to Juju.
Okay, yeah, I have like finance base, that's what they say. I thought I was skip this one, so it's a long day for the meeting. So my name is Juju Do, so you also can call me Juju Do. I moved from the Bay Area to this beautiful area, so to avoid traffic, to have a new lifestyle. So I'm married, and I have a kid, and she's 11, so she's my treasure here. My background, I'm a licensed CPA for the state of California. I have my bachelor degrees with economics, master degrees in civil engineering, and master degrees in business administration, so I have all sorts of backgrounds on my education side. I have been working in the finance area for 14 years, in both private sector and the public sector, so I'm actually holding the key positions on both sides. Before I come to City of Willets, and then I work as a finance director for the city of Real Vista, it's also a small town, and then I led all the finance functions in the city, from accounting operation, because it also has utility and sewer billings, and also for financial reporting, and tax management, risk management, also capital improvement program, because I have a background. So my big accomplishment with the city of Real Vista was bring a six-page Excel spreadsheet style annual budget to a 216-page comprehensive annual budget. I also create the first annual report for the city, and also I created and adopted by the city council the city's first financial policies. So this is my big accomplishment in city of Real Vista. So I'm really glad I'm here, and with the city of Willets. In past few weeks, I feel the, really feel the hospitality from the office staff here, everybody really friendly, so this is my honor to serve the Willetts residents and the business in this area. Any questions for me?
First of all, welcome to Willetts.
Right, yes. My husband actually come from West Virginia, so we all know the styles in here, we're like in the wood area, so away from the traffic, yeah. That's the big accomplishment here for me, yeah. Any other questions?
Well, we are thrilled to have you. I think that you are just exactly the right candidate, and we're so happy to have you, and thank you for coming to Willetts.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Impressive background.
All right, thank you.
And I'm sure I'll have questions.
All right.
All right. Anybody else?
Do we have a, did you want to talk about community development update at all?
Yeah, I am, but I think these guys are first.
Okay, Callexante.
Chief?
Mayor, city council members, thanks for having me up here tonight. Last city council for me for the year, I guess it's last city council meeting for the year. It's been another great year for Little Lake Fire. You know, I think it'd be easy for the public and for me to say the passage of Major J was our highlight, but I kind of want to take this opportunity to go across to another, another highlight. Truly, the all-stars of the year for our local emergency services are volunteers. At this time, we've responded to roughly 630 calls, and the year's not over yet. We've had over 60 days of striking deployment outside of our local jurisdiction, where we've helped out the state and other counties. That includes pre-positioning deployment and actual strike teams of fires, the CAR FIRE, all the, all the big, all the big names, we've been, we've been to all of them this year. We've had multiple structure fires within our community, the most recent over on Mill Creek Drive, a pretty major structure fire. All handled very well. We've had three swiftwater rescue calls where our volunteers were not only trained, but working in the swiftwater environment with boats, life preservers, dry suits, out in our rivers to either recover or to try to save someone's life. Again, these are our volunteer firefighters, employees, family members of our community. We've had four hazmat calls on the year. I know that doesn't seem like much, but when I say hazmat calls, I'm not talking about minor spills on the roadway with, with oil or gasoline. I'm talking putting on level A suits, entering an IDLH atmosphere, which stands for immediately dangerous to life and health, finding and picking up a sample of a product, bringing it out, testing it to find out its hazard classification, and if it is or it isn't hazardous. Again, all done by your volunteers from, that are trained to the level of technician or specialist right here in our community. We've committed many rescues throughout the year, minor to major. I want to talk about one that happened most recently that probably hasn't necessarily been in the news. If this rescue would have happened in the city, it would have been on ABC News. Okay, this, this rescue, if it were a board game or a video game, would be level expert, not level beginner. Okay, we had a vehicle 500 feet over the bank, in the rain, upside down, on a victim, with someone trapped inside, and another walking wounded occupant outside the vehicle, that we had to first find, because the gentleman that called it in, that was the driver of the vehicle, didn't know where he was actually located on Highway 20. Your rescuers made that rescue, made the recoveries. It took a long time, but it was all handled by your local, your local fire department, your local rescuers. Again, those same family members, those same, those same employees of our local businesses. They were out there for seven hours that night to pull that off and get that, that job done, for no pay. Now, locally, recently, we've had a major drawdown in ambulance service. We've talked about this at the staff level, big talk, big talk at the county level. We've lost one of our ambulances in Willetts. We've talked about it at the council meetings before. We lost an ambulance in Ukiah, and I have to tell you that we constantly run at a drawdown level where our closest ambulance is in Redwood Valley, or in Ukiah at times. We've collectively decided that when we get a drop to a draw, what they call a drawdown level of one or zero, basically the closest ambulance to us is Redwood Valley at a drawdown level of one. We've decided that we will respond to all medical aids. Now, historically, Little Lake Fire, we don't respond to all medical aids, to try to keep the amount of response that we have, or the amount of incidents that we respond to, kind of at a minimum, so that it's manageable for a volunteer staff. We go to what they call deltas and echoes. So there's alphas, bravos, charlies, deltas and echoes. Deltas and echoes are the most life-threatening situations for EMS. Last month, our volunteers responded to 77 calls in one month. 26 of those were, were medical aids that we do not normally respond to. So they added 26 calls to their call volume due to the fact that the ambulance is not available, literally not available, and...
Could you kind of explain to everybody, I kind of know what it meant, but how it is that they're not available?
It's many factors, multiple calls at one time, but when you only have one ambulance, we had, we had two ambulances in Willetts, and the local ambulance company has, they called it a brownout, but the reality is, I'm pretty sure it's not coming back. They've removed one ambulance from our city, so we have one ambulance available in Willetts. If there's a call in Covelo, that ambulance goes. If there's a transfer, depending on the drawdown level, there's a transfer from Howard Memorial to go to Santa Rosa, or to another, to somewhere else, that ambulance goes. And so an ambulance out of Ukiah has to come up and cover, but a lot of times, that's, I'm generalizing, there is a plan in place. A lot of times, those ambulances are not available in Ukiah to come up here, so they'll place one in, in Redwood Valley, let's say. And this drawdown's affected us. We're the only department right now that I, that's affected the actual call volume. It's, it's affected response times of road trails and many other fire departments, but we, those departments already go to all medical aids, you know, so, you know, as an example, if road trails gets 220 calls for service a year, they respond to all of those. We don't normally do that. So now we've added this extra load on our volunteers, and I think it's important for council to be aware of what we're seeing. So our folks are working extra hard to add calls and take away time from work, and take away time from their families to produce a quality EMS service in town to assist our ambulance. By no means is this a fix. We're hoping that the county gets the EOA, Exclusive Operating Area, fixed. That way, we can hopefully enjoy the fruits of having a second ambulance. I don't know what's in the EOA, they haven't released that to us yet. I don't know what that service looks like for us, but certainly, we need to make sure that we have EMS service here at a higher level than we have it right now for transport. We are not a transporting agency. Now, despite what you see on social media about seeing emergency resources going one way, and back the other way, and around, we're not lost. We don't need GPS. We're not trying to find a camouflaged fire hydrant. The reality is, at the time that this happened on social media, we, we were on a vehicle accident and had two major medical aids, because there were no ambulances available, in our city limits. So yes, we had vehicles going three different directions, literally, at one time with lights and sirens going. It's not because they're lost. I assure you, I assure you of that. So it's always, it's always funny to see how that works on, in social media. But your fire department's doing a good job. We appreciate your support. Of course, Major J is going to be huge for, for our community, and we're really excited about that. But I wanted to kind of give you a rundown of what, what they've done this year, and I have to tell you, the trend is, if we can't get this EMS system fixed a little bit, the call-up volume's gonna keep going up from there, and, you know, we're gonna keep producing as much as we can, but you have an expert-level fire department with well-trained volunteers. I would easily put them up against any big city fire department, we do the same stuff. Sometimes, when you're talking over-the-bank rescues, sometimes more or better. And, you know, a lot of it's with the equipment that we produce, you know, we built ourselves. You know, as an example, not to be long-winded, on the call for 550 feet over the bank, we have a rope capstan system that's built for a sailboat that we manufactured and built for us to be able to retrieve and rescues that far over the bank, because it was a need, we needed it, and so we produced it. And that's a tribute to Chief Smith. I want to take this opportunity to thank all the families... I want to take this opportunity to thank all the families and local businesses that allow their employees and loved ones to leave at dinnertime, or to leave during work to make that happen, because without them, none of this, none of this stuff happens. The six-hundred-and-thirty calls don't happen. Our office staff can't produce it by itself during the day. We would be, you know, we had a structure fire Mr. Mance building today there at Mazahar, we kept it minor, it was minor, he did a good job of making a stop there, but without our volunteers, if, if that would have been a big problem, we'd be in big trouble. So, you know, please let local business owners know how important it is to let people, let their employees be available, and, you know, when you see, when you see the families of the, of the volunteers, let them know how much we appreciate it. It's a big deal for our community. I wish we had, I wish we had more avenues to let the community know what that jewel they have of a resource with their, our volunteer fire department, because I don't think that they get the credit they quite deserve. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to another good year next year.
May I just add a question?
Yeah, it's a comment, actually. I live on Mill Creek, and so that Mill Creek fire that was two days before Thanksgiving was my first real experience with a fire practically next door, and how scary it is, and how incredibly efficient and effective the firefighters were in getting there quickly and putting it out before it spread to the other adjoining houses. But I also wanted to thank four young men who are all neighbors of that. Mary Fisher, it was her house, she's a ninety-year-old, very beloved in the neighborhood and in the community, and four really young men, one of them who was written up, Sheldon Lund, but also three others came out, they were the first there. Sheldon broke her door down to get her out of the smoke-filled room where she could have actually, you know, suffocated, the smoke was pretty thick, and helped her get across the street to safety, and so did Lance Armstrong, helped him, and two other young men, Joseph Delara and Austin Barheit, both helped keep the adjoining houses watered so they didn't catch fire. So at our next meeting, I'd like to have us do a little acknowledgement, a proclamation, thanking them for their, their volunteer service.
Absolutely. I had contact with all four of those folks on, on scene, and they were doing a great job when I, I was the first fire department unit on scene. They, they were doing a wonderful job, and I was impressed. They were young people up there doing work, and meanwhile, the adults were down on the street filming for Facebook Live, quite honestly. So I respect what they, what they did, and you know what? Quite honestly, they, they produced, and it worked. You know, then one of the neighbor's houses did take some heat, and broke a couple windows, bubbled some paint, but I believe it was Mr. Barheit was the one that, the young man that was running the hose over there to try to keep that cool down, he did a wonderful job. You know, that's the kind of community support that we need.
And it's all the bravery involved, because they aren't trained yet, and yet they were right there, really hot, you know, the flames right there. So they were very courageous, and I just wanted to thank them, as well as the fire department, which had about eight units down there and really did the job.
Yeah, your local fire department that night, Not County Mutual Aid, produced fifteen firefighters, and four fire trucks out of this district for that fire.
Yeah, that's a great, yeah, thank you.
Many people volunteer in our community, Chris, but I think for those men and women who volunteer at the fire department, the sacrifice, not just for themselves, but the families, what they give up to, to keep us all safe, is, is deeply appreciated, and, right, they deserve more.
You know, I, you, you talk about the training, Suprina, and, you know, I made mention of four hazmat calls we went on. Those folks that are in those level A suits, those big mushroom-looking level A suits that we talked about for, for hazmat, you know, for them to be a hazmat specialist, that's two-hundred-and-forty hours. That's not counting any other training, that's not counting continuing education, that's two-hundred-and-forty hours out of their time to get that level, and not because they're gonna get paid another dollar, it's just because they want to do it.
That's an incredible level of volunteerism.
And that's just for, that's for a low-frequency call, super-high-risk, super-low-frequency event, and we have that here. We're lucky, we're lucky, most, most, most communities do not, so I'm certainly proud of them.
Really thank you.
Thank you, and our family for your sacrifice.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chris. Thanks, Chris. Lico, did you have anything? Public works and engineering? Nope. You got anything for us? Nope? Nope? Okay. Dusty, you're on. Again?
I'm sitting here very nervous about trying to do my part to implement the Main Street Plan, and Chris's story's kind of put that in perspective. Mayor, did you want me to go over the LAFCO? You want me to get a recap on that?
Yeah, I mean, I figured.
Okay, good. I'll start with that. The department's been busy, but I'll, I'll start with the recap on that. Hopefully I've got my notes here still, all right. Staff attended the December third LAFCO meeting, Local Agency Formation Commission. The reason we attended is there was a, a couple items related to Willets. There was a review of the municipal service review, our capacity for wastewater, water, et cetera, pretty standard. But there was also a discussion on some identified potential updates to the sphere of influence for Willets, as identified by LAFCO staff. We, I think we've, we've mentioned them at, at the council meetings before, but some of the options included grabbing some of the existing residential developed properties around Della Avenue, that's over by the, the Blosser School there. These are lots that, that already support existing homes, are already served by sewer and water surfaces by, sewer and water services by the city, and in LAFCO world, it's logical to then draw a, a planning boundary around those, those properties. So that, that was up for discussion. We also talked about, there's some industrial zone land that's currently in the county. Those owners apparently are interested in being incorporated into the city so they can take advantage of our water and sewer services, so they can realize their development And one of those owners was, was in attendance at the meeting and spoke in front of the LAFCO committee. Those were really the, out of the recommendations in LAFCO's report, those were the, the two that, that I spoke, spoke to. Also took the opportunity to mention a potential opportunity for the county and the city to team up and realize the much-needed housing in both of our, our areas. Certainly, housing in, in Willets would benefit us as, as well as those, the county offices in Ukiah. We often hear about people having a hard time finding housing and throughout the county. There are two big, I'm not gonna say obstacles, but two, two, two items that, that need to be taken care of in order to support a sphere of influence update, which would then allow those properties to be eligible to be annexed into the city, is, is the SEQA work, to support those projects, as well as coming into a tax sharing agreement with the county. I spoke specifically to the Della Avenue and the industrial lands, because with the Della Avenue projects regarding SEQA, because those projects, those properties are already developed, it's staff understanding that, that, that project would be exempt from SEQA. With the industrial land option, staff understands that the owners are going to pay for the SEQA work, so in those two cases, the city would not be on the hook for, for having to pay for, for SEQA work. The, the county, one of the supervisors sits on, on LAFCO and, and just said, you know, the county in general is always open to discussions, but I want to mention, you know, that, that is a, a big component of, of these, of eventual annexation, is having a master tax sharing agreement with the county. I know that, that other cities have been in negotiations with the county for some time. We have a very intelligent city manager and city attorney, and I think, you know, our, our situation might be a little bit different than the other jurisdictions, and I have a certain level of confidence that there is an agreement that could be made, because really what we're talking about is not a, not necessarily a big money grab, but really just trying to, to team together to, to build much-needed housing. And I think, I think that'll hopefully become clear when, when we start having discussions with them, yeah.
Since that was a workshop where things kind of get aired out, my, my question, have you met with your county counterparts to, please tell them what we're thinking of doing? I, I wasn't quite, I think at that meeting, you had spoke about having to get with them, I believe, but have you met with the county at all?
Just on a very informal basis, I have spoken to the, to the, I guess would be my commander depart, which I think is the planning and building director for the county. I spoke to him both prior to that meeting, as well as at a housing summit that we both spoke at.
Okay.
Yeah, so we didn't, didn't want to catch them off-guard of that, those discussions items at, at LAFCO, and they were very appreciative that we reached out and, and had just very brief discussions, nothing of any substance to report. I think overall, there, there is support for building additional housing, everyone sees that as a need, so that's, I think, where we start off on, on, on agreement. And, and again, we're just, you know, the idea is that you, you, you put everything on the table, this is, this is everyone's cost, this is what everyone's offering, and as long as either side is trying to be overly selfish, there's an agreement there, you know.
I think the, also, the plan was for you to come back in February, do you see that still happening?
Yeah, I, we, we've reached out to the LAFCO director, and we anticipate having further discussions with them soon, and then coming up with a recommendation for the LAFCO commission in February, yeah. And, and I think, hopefully, there's, there's interest on the county part to, to begin some serious discussions on coming into a tax sharing agreement, because even though we're just sort of initially talking about this Della Avenue, possibly this industrial land, you know, the city's done a great job investing in their water and sewer infrastructure, and, you know, at the, at the council's approval, there's an opportunity to support some significant growth. Okay. So I think I reported a couple meetings ago that we, our housing element update was approved. Our next update's due August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. The good news is, is that if we complete that on time, we then move to an eight-year cycle.
Oh, eight years?
Yeah, yeah, so after two thousand nineteen, the next one wouldn't be due for eight years after. Looking forward to that. We're already working with our consultants to, to come up with an estimate to complete the next update. They're aware that staff's wanting to take a bigger role in completing that update, and so we can recognize some cost savings at this time, so I will report back and keep you updated on, on that matter. The previous housing element identified that the majority of our housing's over forty years old in the city, so there's a concern that, that we might have a growing number of owners that can't afford to properly upkeep their properties. And so staff is exploring the idea of competing for community development block grants. One of their programs is housing rehabilitation loans. Those with moderate to low income would be eligible to receive those funds. We looked at some of the census data and kind of reading between the lines, there might be right around four hundred homes in the city that have owners that would be eligible for, for those funding, should the city receive it. I believe we can request up to one million dollars. This would be a, it should be aborted, the funds, the city would then be in charge of allocating that out to, to owners that, that make application. You don't actually have to repay the loan right away, and my understanding is that you would receive the loan, complete the upgrades. Should you ever sell your house, at that point, we would recollect our portion of the funds. But this would be a way to help ensure that existing housing stock is kept in good condition. It would help ensure that, that we retain our longstanding community members that might otherwise need to sell their place to someone else that could afford to buy it at a reduced rate probably at that point, come in and fix it, then the person who sold it, you know, then, you know, what are their options? You know, they become further limited. So just exploring it, staff will be going to Sacramento on Thursday to meet individually with state staff, and then there's a state-sponsored training on Friday. So we'll get back to you with it, but at this point, we're just exploring the idea.
Do we have appropriate or enough staff time to be able to manage said grants if they were?
Good question. So we do, council has done a wonderful job. Thank you very much for adding new employees to the community development department. The wonderful thing about CDPG grants is that we can use up to fifteen, maybe twenty percent of that to actually pay for additional help administering the grants, and so what I would suggest, especially with, with your staff being new to these programs, we're kind of, we're, we're learning every day, that's why we're anxious to, to go to Sacramento and, and learn more directly from their staff. We're also communicating with other jurisdictions like Fort Bragg that run similar programs and learning from them as well. We've got meetings set up, more meetings set up with them later this week. But likely what we would recommend is if we do get awarded that funds, that we use a portion of that to pay for consultants or additional parts-time staff to help us administer through that, you know.
And I wanted to throw in, and often with home loan programs or, or loans that are centered around any kind of residential home rehabilitation, off, there are, it's sort of fraught with a lot of government requirements and regulations, because home lending is, is very regulatory full, it is regulatory-heavy. Generally, those sorts of activities are contracted out to a lender, like a professional lending institution that has all the right paperwork and the, the right disclaimers and all those things when you're taking a loan out on your property. And so that's probably an avenue we would go for rehab loan, is going through a third-party lender type.
And the jurisdictions we've been talking to, that's, that's consistent with our city manager.
Yeah, that's what, that's the model I've always seen. It's not something that a city really takes on, lending with a lien on someone's house, something not a business we would really want to get into.